All right, it's 5:30. Time to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand as we recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all that are in attendance for tonight's meeting. I hope we move along at a pretty good pace and you're not here any longer than you have to be. Thank you for being here. Leonard, Gary, can you hear us?
I can, Mr. Mayor, thanks.
Okay. You had a chance, both of you had a chance to look over the agenda. Any questions?
No.
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right. I make a motion that we adopt the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Moving on, appointments. I move that I appoint Chris Frye as the Atmos Gas or Atmos Energy Representative on the Board of Examiners Plumbers. He will be taking the place of Eric Grant, that is an employee of Atmos. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. All right. The common consent agenda. Any questions on that, gentlemen?
I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
I second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to public hearings, number four. Public hearing to consider revisions to floodplain regulations in ordinance number 4297. Rick, Don?
I've never been here.
All right.
So we're here, FEMA has adjusted the floodplain map, which will go into effect June 20th of 2019. So we have been asked by the state to update our floodplain ordinance, which we have done. We have taken a template that they have given us, made some changes to it, and submitted it to PICA, to the Division of Water Resources. Their lead engineer has looked at it and approved it, and sent it back to us to present to you for adoption of the floodplain ordinance. So changes, major changes really, changes too would be, instead of requiring buildings, new buildings that would be built in the floodplain to be one foot above base flood elevation, requirement and recommendation from the state, which we are following, the lead of Montgomery County, Coffeyville, Cherryvale, and Caney, would be to require buildings to be built two foot above base flood elevation, which would lower premium rates for those people. And anybody that had substantial damage, that chose to rebuild instead of to relocate the structure or to remove the structure, it would have to be raised two foot above base flood elevation. And anybody that would do substantial improvements, same thing. So that would be the changes there. HVAC that would be damaged or replaced would be required to be elevated to two feet above base flood elevation, to make sure that it wasn't damaged in the course of flash flooding or flooding. And then there's also a cumulative improvement in there if somebody were to enlarge their property in five consecutive years to where it would be more than 50% of the value of the home, that would have to be, it would have to be elevated two feet above base flood elevation. But to be honest with you, looking through the records, I don't know that anybody would be, had done anything like that, that I've been aware of, that there would be the cumulative of five years, five consecutive years. So I don't know how much that would impact us, but looking at the loss records, I don't see anybody that's had any losses in five consecutive years that would be required to do that, so. But that is what the state's asked us to do. What we're trying to do is trying to be part of the program that we would get, what is it, C, what's that?
CMS.
CMS program, which if we were to get 500 points, would allow us to give insurance breaks to everybody that had flood insurance in town. So we are working towards that. This gets us 270 points of 500 towards that. There's other things that we're doing to gain points, to be part of that program that would be reflected in everybody's insurance rates.
Exactly. CRS.
CRS, yes.
CMS related.
Yeah, so.
So is that obtainable, the 500 points, reaching that?
Yeah, it's obtainable.
Without too...
Without doing too many things, yeah. That's obtainable, so.
The floodplain maps had previously never been digital. We had preliminary maps that were digital, we could print off copies of, but they weren't official maps. We still had the big paper maps. So it's been an ongoing thing the Department of Water Resources has been working on. So this process adopts those digital maps, which is awesome for us. And the floodplain regulations have never, it hadn't been changed in quite a long time. It just adopted whatever was there. So when this all came out, Don and I talked about it, and I went to Cherryvale, Caney, Coffeyville, so that everyone in the county, all five entities are adopting the same regulations. So we, I think everybody used Paul Kreutz's independence, you approved these, right?
We did whatever the state told us to.
So Paul Kreutz reviewed Caney's, Coffeyville's, and mine, and I don't know about Cherryvale's, but then he reviewed independences, so they've all been vetted by the lawyers and the process. So now, this, for the first time, everyone in the county will have the same floodplain regulations, which is, is a really good deal for the county, I think. And from what I've found, by raising from one foot to two foot in the HVAC system equal with the structure, can save up to 40, 45% on flood insurance. So that was a lot of the reason why we moved this direction.
So the base elevations, consider what, the 100-year flood elevation?
Yeah.
Yes.
And did the boundaries of the floodplain change with this, or are we talking just about adoption of the ordinance?
Well, it's changed slightly in some areas.
But that's a separate matter, isn't it?
That's a separate matter, because we have no control over, we have no control over the maps, but we do over the ordinance.
That's what, I wasn't clear with the map being attached with the submittal, if we were looking at two modifications or just basically an ordinance that would control construction within that district?
Right.
So the floodplain limits have been, are periodically adjusted by...
The floodplain maps, you mean the area that's in the floodplain? It hadn't been changed in 40 years.
Okay.
So it does get, it does get adjusted periodically. So this is the most recent adjustment.
Okay.
So this is the one that I think hearings and notices started, what, three or four years ago, to let the community know that these changes were coming. So June 20th of 2019 is when this, when these new, the new maps will go into effect. And so for us to remain in the NFIP program, we have to update our ordinance before that date of implementation. So that's what we're doing, is updating our ordinance so that we can, our community can continue in the National Flood Insurance Program.
Okay, because I was wondering, as we're looking at the Whiskey Creek Tributary area and that, if it's been updated to take into consideration those that have chose to build within the floodplain to displace water from their elevated structure, of course, spreads eventually when you get enough construction in the floodplain, that does modify the boundaries and so...
Countywide, I haven't, because whenever, when I get calls for floodplain issues in the county, I always, I do the digital maps that we're approving now, but I always have to go back to the old maps, the big paper maps, and compare. I've found very little difference or variance. I don't know what Don's experience is, but they're pretty close.
There's going to be some differences in town with that, but I will have to admit, I'm loving the new digital maps. Trying to extrapolate with the old paper maps can prove to be very difficult.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good deal.
So, but we're doing this so that we can be in conformity with what the state's requiring us to do and what FEMA's requiring us to do to remain in the program, so.
Okay, all right. Gary, do you have any questions for Don or Rick?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay.
One other question then. As an ordinance, this will be available online for...
Yes.
The public?
Yes.
And, okay.
Yes. And there was a, there was a notice printed approximately 25, 28 days ago, making everybody aware that we're presenting this tonight. And then, like you say, the process of the map changes, that's been going on for several years, so.
So that'll be readily available to anybody in those areas considering modifying their house, and they will have a way to go to the website. I guess there'll be a time lapse from when it's entered into the system. Does, we have a, is Codex, a different company does that for us, don't they?
Manicode.
Manicode, yeah, okay.
They send them in quarterly.
Okay, good. Great.
All right, any more questions, gentlemen?
Question.
Oh, yes.
Now, you've got the floodplain here. What that level finally come up to be? I have all the paperwork last year. My property showed, I was in the floodplain, but the new one shows I'm not. Now, what's the elevation now?
Would you please come up, just come up front and identify yourself, please? I want to know who we're talking to.
I'm Joe McKenzie, I'm at Jefferson.
Oh, okay.
Come up to the mic for the way of Commissioner.
Yes.
I was under the floodplain before, and they canceled my assurance because they showed me in the floodplain, but from the paperwork that they showed me last year, and the state guy that called me said, "My house is not in the floodplain now." That's why I was just wondering what the elevation is actually, this outside gray line is going to be what?
Is your property inside the city or outside the city?
I'm outside the city. I'm right at the bridge, right there.
We're adopting the new floodplain maps. The best of what he told you was outside.
Okay, that's what, so I was wondering, no? Okay, thank you.
So is that floodplain elevation tied in to like 812 feet or 120?
It's actually above sea level, but I don't remember.
Well, the BFE is just something that we estimate. If you, if you're doing something in a floodplain and you have to have a BFE, you have to get that to a license surveyor.
Right.
So if you, if you want to know what your BFE is, we can give you an idea, but it's not an official.
Okay, because that's what, if you actually want to know, if you're close to that border, you can determine the elevation of your ground, and then there should be an elevation reading for that floodplain tied to topographical data and elevation, so that would be the way to determine.
On the digital floodplain maps, that blue line is the official line, and it gives you a scale on the map that you can measure over yourself. And if, I just ran into this earlier this week. So you can measure it yourself over to that blue line. If you're not in it, you don't have to apply to any floodplain regulations.
So if the blue line crosses your property...
That changes things. Yeah. But the blue line is the official line.
Yeah.
Because I, you know, I had some people wonder, you know, is it close? If you had, it's official.
That borderline location can be tricky.
Yeah, that's where my house was, was under it before, but with the new one that they sent me showed me, part of my property is underwater with it, but not, not the house itself. So that's what I was trying to figure out, that actually, so I can get the survey and make sure I'm about nine or 10 feet below, above that, that one that they show now. So, okay, that's all I do. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McKenzie, thank you, sir.
That's all, map amendments and map, you know, things that don't apply to this, but...
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No.
All right. I move to adopt, I make a motion to move to adopt ordinance number 4297, A, floodplain management ordinance for 60.3D community with regulatory floodway identified. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, items for commission action. A, consider a request from Joel McKenzie and Barbara Hardy to block an alley from Ninth Street between Main and Maple approximately 95 feet east on May 18th, 2019, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
And they are here, if you have any questions.
Oh, okay. Would you like to come up and just give us a summary of what it is you're...
What we have is the building, the building that's right there on the alley is the, we used to live in the Landon House, and my father owned the property across the street as a store, for his woodworking stuff that he did. And my mother died two years ago, and we've got a whole building full of furniture. It's antique, old, you know, American, early American furniture that we have to get rid of, and we just didn't have any area. The front door has never been opened in the last 20 or 30 years. We have a side door that would help us, that we could actually use the alleyway for that part of it, to remove it and have it, you know, for the people to see. Otherwise, it's just, it's not visible with the, with the little bit of area downtown to do anything. So we'd like to get it emptied out, and I know the, the ordinance guy wants to look inside, because we're in that core area. We'd like to get it cleaned out so that we're, you know, the city's going to be happy with all the stuff that's not in there. So that's, we'd just like to use that for eight hours and try to sell that. We're going to have to, we're going to have a, we had a couple of auctioneers, but they didn't want to deal with it because they didn't think it'd sell, so we're just going to sell it to the, you know, anybody that would like to buy it, try to lower the amount that's in there and get, clean it up. And my brother's working on it. He's replaced all the windows in the building, and he's going to try to make an apartment there to live in, so we're just doing the best we can to try to help the downtown grow a little bit.
Sure.
So we'd like to use it for eight hours, and if it doesn't, if it doesn't even hurt you guys.
All right. I know Alan, I worked with Alan for a little bit at the program.
He owns the building now, but like I say, all the inside stuff is the stuff my mother left us.
Okay.
So we're trying to dissolve it.
Okay. All right. Mr. McKenzie, thank you very much. As I understood, Hager's was notified, they don't have any issue with that Hager's market?
I sent letters to all the property owners along that alley, mailed them letters and didn't receive any responses.
Okay. And I also understood that the sanitation department said they can work around the temporary closure.
They said they could back into the alley and it would be fine.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions on this?
No, I don't have any questions.
Gary, are you good?
I'm good.
All right. Then I make a motion to approve a request from Joel McKenzie and Barbara Hardy to block an alley from Ninth Street between Main and Maple approximately 95 feet east on May 18th, 2019, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, thank you, thank you. Moving on, item B, consider authorizing the mayor to sign a quitclaim deed for a small irregular parcel to Woods Lumber.
We were contacted by John Beetz about this little parcel, which originally belonged to Woods, and I guess they deeded it to the city in like 1963. We haven't quite figured out what the original story was, if it was originally supposed to be an alley and then part of the other property sold, and somehow it got, must have gotten left out of legal or something. And so it looks like it probably was a, something that was just overlooked, and we're just trying to clean it up.
Okay.
And I don't, Jeff knows more about it, he may, I don't know if he has any comments.
I think it's just an oddity. I think there was an attempt to open an alley at one time. It doesn't appear that was ever done. There, I think Woods deeded that to the city. There used to be a bottling plant, and I think at one time they wanted to access the back entrance to the building.
Okay.
And of course, the bottling plant's come and gone. There's, it's been basically engulfed by the lumberyard and been used.
That's directly south of the, where the old lumberyard facility was, or is, the original lumberyard?
Oh, I don't know where the original was, but it's, it's the west block.
Okay.
That area.
Okay. Gary, you and Leonard have any questions on this?
No, I don't have any questions.
Gary, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Then I make a motion, I move to authorize the mayor to sign a quitclaim deed for a small irregular parcel to Raymond H. Woods Rivocible Trust. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next on the, items for commission action. Item C, consider approving a resolution to adopt a formal procurement policy. Lacy, how are you this evening?
I'm good, how are you?
Dandy.
So this, the changes to the policy noted in the RCA that we updated for our discussions at the last commission meeting, sections 3.1 and 3.3, the dollar limits, we took out that, that one section and made the first limitation one to $1,500. And then we also took out some of the language in the city employee definition.
Right.
And it now states, "An individual drawing a salary or wages from the city, any department activity, commission, council, board, or other entity established by the executive or legislative branch of the city, and any non-compensated individual serving as an elected official of the city." Otherwise, it has remained the same.
Was there a change on, on the contract? Did we not agree to eliminate in generally?
I, that, that was not taken out.
I was a little confused there. I thought maybe that, that we considered to, and just...
What section is that?
Made that read, that would be section two, on page two of 17. And basically, read that as a legally binding promise enforceable by law in writing between the city and one or more outside parties regardless of form or title for the purchase of supplies, materials, services, professional services, and construction.
Okay.
I had not, but I can, I can strike that, but I had not changed it in this version
that we have.
And then I had a couple of questions, if I can find my paperwork here. Leonard, if you have something, go ahead while I'm looking for my paperwork.
I guess I kind of perceived, going through it a little different, that, you know, as, as being the policy and procedure for us, that we would take it, review it, kind of mark up what we thought, and then lay it out as us commissioners, what we saw, and then come back and cuss or discuss the different points. So, yeah, I went through and, you know, had quite a few changes. I didn't know how we wanted to proceed with it, just go through each one, you know, take the time now, do, if we have the work session, do it in work session, but, you know, I'd be glad to just kind of wing it as we go through after you get started or whatever.
Okay. I had some questions that had, that had come up also.
Well, you know what, I guess since you started with the definitions, looking at it, I went back after our discussion last week, and I ended, the definition of an employee is an individual drawing a salary or wages from the city, period. I didn't see why, definitely an elected official would be wanted, we would want to come in to be an employee, as well as considering any commission or commission member on one of our various boards. So, you know, I thought simply an employee drawing a salary or, or wages from the city would be an employee, because this, there's no case that an elected official would be handling a purchase, or I could ever see that one would. And I don't think that, you know, I as an elected official want to be considered as an employee of the city either. I'm an elected official, I don't work for the city, I work for, for the electorate, I work for the people. So, you know, I can't see that being included there, and the same with the boards, as we look through the purchasing policy with the, the action, I, I think it should be someone just maintaining, that's receiving wages or salary from the city. That was my thought. And again, on the contracts, since you were referring to it, I thought a legally binding promise enforceable by law, period.
Which I think we discussed, that that would be fine.
Yeah. I think, you know, just try to keep it simple and not, not get into a lot of other areas, but...
Okay, I didn't mark off enough of that, I guess. I started and I stopped.
Well, I think it's, and I see, you know, this is, Gary's got ideas reviewing it, you've got ideas, and...
Sure.
That's where we just come, and I thought we were going to lay out our ideas and then, you know, review what we've talked about, and, you know, there's, we haven't had a procurement policy or purchasing policy for so long, so why rush to adopt it, you know, let's read it, because that's what I've done, read it for last meeting, I went back through, you know, checked some things, read it again, and, you know, trying to understand more and see how it's going to work. And I think, you know, just to say, "Here it is," and approve it, we're not going to take the advantage of all of our ideas or inputs, so.
Don, make a suggestion, since the receiving commissioners, that may have some same and some different recommendations, and if you have like a whole bunch, and it's going to take hours to discuss, what if you somehow like took the document and marked it up, submitted it to staff, let them compile the requested changes in black and white, and include that in your packet next time, so you can see what everybody's recommended and what their response is to it? And then...
Well, that's what I was thinking too, with a work session, you know, or just have, instead of trying to combine them all into one note, because maybe as we discuss, we want to change or eliminate or do something different that, you know, if we submit these that, like you said, then I can have a copy of Gary's, he can have mine, Louis can have, we can have them all, then we can sit down in a, in a, I don't know. Gary, are you going to be back next Wednesday?
No, I'm gone for the month.
Okay. We could use, we could schedule a Wednesday morning work session. What about next Wednesday's session then, or if it's in the morning, is that something we just want to postpone and do it when you get back?
That, I don't want to inconvenience anybody, but that would be great from my perspective. I will not be available.
So, you know, I think that would be the format where we don't have other business to take care of, that you give us each time then to review one another's comments, and then we can sit down, each of us with all three of them and the original, and go through it page by page or item by item.
I still think if you submit...
I still think if you submit your comments to staff in advance, so they can compile it and they get it back to you in advance.
Yep. I can get you, I can get you basically this document with all three of your comments meshed into one.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd like mine red.
Okay. Got it.
What color do you want it to be?
Which color do you want?
Let's go, eh, let's go green.
Green, okay. Gary, you're blue.
Yeah.
I want gold.
Gold, yeah, okay.
Okay, because, yeah, I also have some questions too. And so, um, let's work at making our, each, as each commissioner individually, make a question, identify the questions that we have. And for each one of us, then we can submit them to the, to the city, the city staff, they can review that, and then...
Compile them and...
Compile them. So, do we want to go ahead and, and work on that and have that to submit to the city staff?
Yeah.
For the next...
Well, I think as soon as we get them done, we could...
Okay.
Go ahead and submit them, and then look at, uh, one of our Wednesdays, if we want to move it up. When Gary gets back, we can talk about the schedule for that special meeting, because...
Okay.
You know, if you're not going to be available next week for the Wednesday work session, Gary, I don't know if there's a, you know, a reason to, to have it. It's not the same just hearing your voice over the speakerphone.
And he's not available.
Your, your ambiance is missed.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, my own individual odor.
Yeah. I think it would be better served if you were here in, in person, rather than trying to do a lot of this over the phone. So, why don't we, why don't we move in that direction? You have a, you can look at the copy of the procurement policy that you have, and, and make your notations on that, submit it to the staff, and Leonard and I will do the same, and that way they can review it, and then compile what, the questions that we have, and come up with some answers for us. So, if we could do, do that, um, you know, within a reasonable length of time, uh, you want to put a time limit on this, or?
Just, I basically have got mine marked up, and I can go through it again and...
Okay.
No, don't do that.
Check it.
Just hand it to me.
Okay. Well, I will...
Well, sometimes my comments might not be right. I want to erase them, you know, after I think about things, but I love red, so...
Okay. What I'll do, I'll go through, and I've marked up some of this, but I'll go into a little more detail, and I'll have this to you Monday.
Sounds good.
Monday. And then Gary, whenever you can get around to reviewing the policy and, and marking what you need to mark on that, and just send that to staff, and then they can work on that.
Will do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Lacey, will a PDF work?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
And any word in the file, handwritten word.
I, first one was handwritten, the second one I did the PDF. Word would have been much easier.
Can I just bring this to you?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Lacey, thank you. All right, moving along. Item D, consider amendment number one to the water supply loan, loan agreement with KDHE. Terry, how are you today?
Pretty good.
All right, Dandy.
This, uh, the state decided that they're going to not charge origination fees on the loans. So, they sent us a letter saying that they were taking that off, and it's going to save us some money.
Great. It shows the, it will reduce the loan, uh, the cost reduction of the loan in the amount of $7,000, $769.42.
Yes.
Okay. So, basically, this is just an amendment number one, that, that authorizes me to sign, to make this change on the loan agreement with KDHE.
Correct.
Basically, all that it's concerned.
That's, I just want you to sign it to agree, and that they can take that off.
Okay.
Won't charge us that money.
All right.
On the, it's on page two, uh, First Amendment to the Loan Agreement. It talks about the, the reduction, but then the, the third, whereas, it says, "The municipality hereby determines that it's necessary to amend certain exhibits to the loan agreement." Is that accurate, or is it just this amendment based upon them eliminating the fee?
That, that's what I understood, is just you sign the amendment and it eliminates the fee.
What would, what would that refer to then? Jeff, do you know?
I didn't know every question. I didn't review it for that, but sometimes there are exhibits that have numbers in them, and those numbers might reflect that fee. And if you're, if you're taking the fee out, you might have to amend the exhibit to conform with that.
Okay. There, there is a fee schedule.
Yes.
So, it would be, okay. So, they're saying that we've determined we want that fee scheduled? Okay, it was kind of ambiguous, like there were some other changes that we requested to be done in the scope of the work or the scope of the loan.
Okay.
So...
I think it's pretty much just saying we're agreeing with that change, the amendment, so, you know, it doesn't change the loan amount or anything, it's just removing that fee.
Okay. Gary, are you good?
Do we lose it?
Gary?
Yes, um, Mr. Mayor, I can hear a lot more was being said, but I don't, I don't have any issues with it.
Okay.
So, the drawdown, now that we've started one of our projects, have we got it all worked out, the procedure for drawing down funds for our first project?
I have to call schedule tomorrow.
Okay. Good. That was one of the things on the wastewater, the first loan we had, there was a lot of confusion on the drawdown process.
Yes.
And, you know, s...
With, yes, with change of personnel, there was some confusion.
Yeah.
I think Lacey has it under control. She's got a pretty handle on it.
Good. Good. So, while you're here, how is the project coming?
Doing good. Uh, they have all the underground in, and they did a little more work, but they're, they were going to start making runs into the building, and they'll be pulling wire before too long, waiting on equipment mostly right now.
Right.
Kind of...
Okay. I don't have any other questions concerning the amendment number one.
Um, the pad itself has already been poured, and you've stuffed up into where the pad mount transformer's going to sit?
Yes.
Okay.
Pad mount's there, the pads for the generator and some other equipment, all the handholds are in. It's...
Okay.
They're moving right along.
Good. So, schedule-wise, it looks like it's moving along on...
Yes. We had a progress meeting yesterday morning, and he's predicting substantial completion in October.
Oh, okay.
So, but that's kind of dependent on equipment. That's, that's his only holdup right now.
All right, Terry. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. I move to authorize the mayor to sign amendment number one to the loan agreement with KDHE. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Item E, this is, consider a request from Trevor Bruning to amend the ordinance relating to the consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property to include city-owned airport grounds and buildings within the city limits if approved by the city manager. Is Trevor here? No. Okay, Jeff?
I'll start off by saying, you know that Kansas is a state of carry nation, and we've had very tumultuous laws over the years on alcohol, and we still can't call alcohol alcohol. We have to label it beer, serum malt beverage, weak beer, strong beer, alcoholic liquor. We have all these defined terms that make it confusing. Up until May 2nd, which is one week ago, the state handled all temporary permits for alcohol for consumption on-site. Um, they passed a new law, which now allows cities to step into that arena. Of course, as the city attorney, my meetings where we get legislative updates are in June, so I was given a copy by the local best beverage man, Drew, today of that Senate bill, because he was heavily involved in that, because he had to get ready to, you know, be in the market. And it's 25 pages long. So, the city, we can adopt an ordinance that allows the city to get into this temporary permitting of serum malt beverage, which is three, two or less, or as they call it, when they say the word beer now, that means between 3.2 and 6. They call it strong beer or hard beer. Right now, the state can, there was some thought, Drew and Andrew Demo both told me they didn't think the state did the temporary permits anymore. But right before the meeting, I went ahead and, and I emailed the director of ABC, her name's Debbie Beavers, and she responded at 4:34 this afternoon to me, and said the state can still do temporary permits on strong beer. And that's, so Trevor has a resource. We don't have to rush around and, and adopt an ordinance just so he can sell beer at this event. The state would license him if he chose to go that way. What we would have to do, though, is the event is at the airport, and last year, we painstakingly amended our alcohol ordinance and went through the list of buildings and city-owned property where we thought, under any scenario, somebody might want to have a private party and have beer. Nobody thought of the airport, so the airport's not mentioned in there. So, in your late arriving packet that Kelly put together, is that ordinance that we adopted, uh, back in April 2018. We've gone into subsection C and just added, added like three or four words that address the, the city-owned portion of the airport that's within the city limits. And it would have to get city manager approval still. You just, so if Trevor Bruning, who's made the request, wants to do what he wants to do, this ordinance would have to be adopted. Then he, then he would still have to get city manager approval, and he'd have to get a license from the state. And if he's not already licensed as a retailer, he's going to have, you know, get a sales tax license and stuff like that, too. So, and, uh, city staff was bombarded with all these questions after lunch today, and was scrambling to try and get this to you in an organized fashion. And it's still kind of confusing, to be honest. That's it in a nutshell. So, really, the only thing to consider is the ordinance that I think Kelly sent you, which would allow the city manager to approve sale of alcohol at the airport, if, you know, the city manager thought that was appropriate.
Okay.
And I think everybody knows it's to tie into that racing event.
Right.
It's on Memorial Day weekend. That's what it's, we're talking about.
So, we'll not be responsible for any of the licensing or permitting for the actual consumption. All we're going to do is allow it on our property, but then all the other requirements fall on the state and the, the one desiring to dispense or to sell.
That is correct. We, you know, if you direct city staff to draft an ordinance, to have the city get into, into the licensing business for just the temporary events, we can get an ordinance. Right now, the, in the area of serum malt beverage, our ordinance is a licensing ordinance only for retail sales, which means off-site consumption. Temporary permits are, are always for onsite consumptions, or, you know, usually it's a one or two-day event is what you're looking at, so...
Yeah.
And we, and we can do that. We just have, it's, it's a different scenario.
And a different set of responsibilities to the...
That's, that's true.
Yeah. So, on the, uh, I don't know if this was his request about city-owned grounds and buildings. Did he request buildings to be included?
I, that, that was just a catch-all phrase. It, it was added.
Okay. Because I, I know this was really rushed, and, you know, our policy of having things in the week before the commission meeting, that's twofold. It allows staff time to prepare, and with everything else going on, and that we can get all our, our ducks in a row, and then for us to review it. And looking at the ordinance, it was, this was modified, wasn't it?
In 2018?
Well, the one that was, we got tonight, didn't it have, now this, the one I'm looking at, that you handed out, was it modified, or was that the original?
It added the airport, city-owned property.
Okay. Okay. So, this, this is the one that we would be looking at adopting. Well, I didn't see it under buildings, too, that the airport, any buildings were, were listed. So, what's our, our recommendation that we're considering? Just the grounds, or particular buildings, or at the airport?
The, the added language adds, quote, "The city-owned portions of the municipal airport within city limits," end of quote. So, that would cover grounds and buildings.
And buildings.
I, you know, I wasn't...
We added buildings, yes, if somebody wanted to have a function at the terminal or something, who knows? Then they're covered, kind of like we did at the zoo and the park buildings.
I was saying, the manager would have to approve.
Under, under B, it's specific for buildings. And then where, I saw under C, it talks about open areas of...
Yeah, that's correct. B is the subsection on buildings, and C was more open areas. That's true.
So, if we're going to put buildings, would we want to specify the terminal building, or is that our only?
I don't think you need to do that. I think if it's city-owned, and it's at the airport, and it's within city limits, it's covered.
Okay.
Unless you want to exclude something. And if you want to exclude something, we would probably need to put that there.
Yeah. I just, reading it where we've got it separated with item B referring to buildings and item C to open areas, if, there's no question if we put terminal building at the airport under the building. I hate to get it to where it creates a conflict with somebody assuming...
I don't think it's a conflict, because B, those buildings are generally ones that you pay to rent. Those, like, you know, 20, 30, 40, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, the open grounds at the park, you don't pay to rent.
Right.
So, I, and I, I guess the airports, you don't pay to rent, but...
No.
Neither.
Yeah.
Although the city manager can make that a condition.
Yes. Okay. Gary, do you have any questions on this?
You know, I, um, I had not seen that in the item, so I have no preparation on this subject at all.
That's right. That's my fault. This, this came at the tail end. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
My mistake. My mistake.
Not at all.
Okay. Um, well, if there's not any other questions, uh, I make a motion to approve a request from Trevor Bruning to amend the ordinance relating to the consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property to include city-owned airport grounds and buildings within the city limits for special events approved by the city manager. city limits for special events approved by the city manager. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carried. All right. Reports. Gentlemen, you've had a chance to take a look at the treasurer's quarterly financial statement for the quarter ending March 31st, 2019. And do either of you have questions concerning the quarterly statement?
Yeah. I had sent, I had sent the questions, Lacy, regarding the accounts that were indicated in red.
Yes.
So, the water treatment plant, is that our new project?
This is the ongoing project now. This is, I believe, the electrical.
Okay, so the reason...
We just haven't drawn down on the loan yet, and I have a call tomorrow to discuss that.
We just haven't got our money from KDHE. The airport AWAS system, it's been submitted and we just haven't received money on it also?
Yes, and I did follow up on that one, so I, I'm going to resubmit the paperwork. I think there was an error in the processing and it shows as being sent on our end but not received on theirs, so.
Line 69.
This is the runway project?
AIP. Yeah, I wasn't familiar with that project number, the...
This one was submitted for reimbursement in December of 2018 and we're just awaiting the funds again.
What was that? Was that a runway?
Yes, this is a runway project.
Was that from KDOT?
Yes.
The funding was KDOT there?
I believe so.
And I guess this special park?
That is for the tortoise exhibit, and we actually just received a reimbursement from Four Paws today, so.
For which exhibit?
The tortoise.
Tortoise?
The tortoise.
It's been a while since I've been out there, didn't know we had a turtle exhibit.
We do.
Great. The contractor has been paid, I think his contract was like $469,000 and he's been paid $374,000. What's the difference?
I'm not familiar with the numbers that you were giving me. The 469...
Yeah, that was on the final application for payment. It lists the original contract sum, the change orders, and then how much the previous certificate for payment. If, if you want, I could give you copies.
Sure.
I went back through some old meetings to kind of research. I remember initially there was, Mission Construction had a concern with the final application for payment, and so...
Okay, yeah, I would take that from you. That'd be great.
So what is, what is their actually concern that they're not, that they're refusing to sign the final paperwork? I mean, what's their complaint?
I believe, Craig, do you, do you know the, I wasn't privy to these meetings, I wasn't here yet, but I believe the issue is the length of time that the project took and the assessment of some additional, is that correct?
Liquidated damages.
Yeah, they were disputing liquidated damages that were assessed.
And there have been meetings with the local KDOT team and they have told us kind of to back off and let them go through the correct protocols, so they've asked their legal counsel and it's currently sitting with them, and we're just waiting to hear back on, on what our next move should be. And we decided to go that route because these are funds being reimbursed from them, so we need to follow their protocols in order to receive the reimbursement.
Yeah, well, we've, we had this happen in architectural projects, we would just notify the contractor.
Was it your money though, or was it like KDOT grant money? I think that's the difference.
Somewhere there should be some correspondence, and it sounds like that we haven't got correspondence. It's been a year and a half. And, you know, I think we probably need to request copies from the engineer, his correspondence with the contractor, and then copies of correspondence that the contractor sent back to him. Because, you know, with, if the project was $469,000 and we've paid $374,000, I think it was a 75% matching or KDOT paid 75% of the project, and our portion was 25, so, you know, either we're covering the whole thing and there are ways to get, get it happening quicker. Sometimes, you know, it depends who you talk to with KDOT, if they'll carry the ball or they say since we issue and approve the pay request and assess the liquidated damages, whether they'll turn it over to us. But we need to get with the engineer to see what the documents have flowed to get it going, because they should be pushing for resolve. I think the final pay request was only for $29,000 and we're still showing $8,000 in retainage, so. So that's under dispute with contractor. The Peter Pan geometric, that's separate from the extension. And as, the last time Sean Turner was here, I thought, we talked about, he was looking at the closeout on that project also. We still had some disbursements.
Yes, and I believe what you're looking at here is the 21,000, it would be engineering fees for the first and second extension.
Okay, so that all is being recorded as one project?
Yes.
I thought that it was, yeah, I didn't pick that up.
The true geometric project is completed.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So that's with the extension also, okay.
On a related note, we're getting close to looking at the next phase on Peter Pan, as far as that.
Yeah, they, as I think, been saying for, for a half a year now, they keep pushing back the letting date, and we just got a status update yesterday saying it's now June. They don't give us the date, just, it was March, then it was May, now it's June, so we're waiting to hear that.
Is it because of plan review or what's the...
I don't know, I could check with Sean and he could check with the state why they keep, I don't know, maybe it's a low priority project or something, they, you know, we expected this last fall, you know, initially.
Yeah, I don't think it's a project that KDOT handles bidding, I thought it's up to our engineer to bid the project.
I believe they have to open it for, they have to give us approval to start the bidding, I believe, is where we're at.
So we're waiting on their, for their approval, so, hmm. Well, may they honor their latest commitment, and this will happen in June, but I guess we'll, we'll know here in a few weeks whether that's going to happen or not.
On the wastewater loan fund, have you looked at that?
Fund 10, is that what we're talking about?
To see if we've drawn down from that loan for all the projects we did?
I have not. You are speaking about Fund 10, correct?
It's down at the bottom of the second page. Under liabilities, the Kansas Public Water Supply Pollution Control Loan Fund, the loan number C20-1915-01, Southeast Lift Station, there were, we've got a $4 million loan for some projects.
I have not. Which, what number is this?
He's talking, it's not about a number, but right above the signatures.
Yeah, it's right about the second page.
Oh, okay. No, I have not. I'll look into that.
Yeah.
Okay, this is going to sound silly and coming from me, it's probably understandable that you had mentioned a $4 million loan and this shows $2,438,278.53. So we've drawn down from that $4 million loan, we've drawn down 1.5-plus billion dollars that, is that what?
I think there was some confusion in, in that loan with some projects. We did multiple projects under that loan. Birdie Street Lift Station, seemed like there was one or two other lift stations. Do you remember, Terry?
I will add to this, Commissioner, is we have been paying on this loan, so that is the actual balance of it at this time.
Okay.
We did some line work and we also did Southeast Lift Station and Birdie and Lakeside Lift Station, we were going to do, but we didn't have enough money remaining with the loan. I thought this loan had been closed out, but apparently it hasn't. I know Sean's working on the new loan, gave us an update on that today.
It might have been closed out and now we've just been paying down on it and that's what it's.
Okay.
But I know we have been making payments on it.
Yeah. The last time we had the opportunity to go through a report, there was still some questions that it got kind of confusing with our schedule and the drawdown process with the change. So that's what I was wondering.
I'm confused on loans all the time, I don't...
Yeah, so this is just a balance on, okay.
Correct.
Good.
So we've already, yeah, we're paying back on some left under that $4 million.
I apologize, we've been making payments on it for years.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right, any, any other questions?
Have we got any notice on our other loan that we requested for wastewater? Have we got notice? We'd, we'd made a request for another loan for wastewater.
Sean is working on that today, and he's in the third phase of that.
I believe. He requested some additional documentation from me today that he needs to submit, but he's working on that and is, yeah, phase three of the application.
Right.
Oh, okay.
And we're reviewing it next week.
It should be finalized for two more.
Good. Well, thank you.
All right. Lacy, Terry, thank you very much. All right, moving right along. We've all had a chance to look at the city board minutes, and we're moving on to city manager's comments. Craig?
No comment other than, of course, we had a normally scheduled work session next week. I assume we're going to cancel that since Gary's going to be out of town, so the next one would be June 15, 16, 17, something, that Wednesday, that second Wednesday. So we'll postpone until then. And do you want then the procurement policy as an agenda item on that work session?
Yeah.
June 12.
June 12?
That's all I have in here.
Okay, all right, thank you, Craig.
Oh, actually, at that work session...
I remember the 19th.
The 19th.
The 19th?
19th, not the 12th. It's that, the 12th would be the commission.
13th, it would be the commission.
But that week.
Yeah.
So it's on the off week. Staff has a, we've been working through a condemnation process, condemnation list, and staff's been working, we've got a list of 44 properties that we would like to review at the commission. Would that be appropriate at that work session or maybe, maybe we can't wait that long, I'm not sure. But, but, because we're, it's a, it's a good process we're going through. But it's a perfect item typically for a work session because it then, you know, we don't want to bring it to a commission meeting and here, here's 44 properties and...
I don't think we want a work session of 44 properties either.
Well...
Yeah. You know, I think, maybe we need to discuss the process of how we do that, you know, how's that tied with our budget? You know, there's no way we can do 44 houses.
That's why we want to discuss it with you. We, I mean, we wouldn't, we have a presentation, it doesn't actually take that long, we went through it as staff, and we've kind of highlighted, not all these properties, 44 would we be recommending for condemnation. Some yes, some no, but, but the properties that were, what was the term used by the assessor?
Unsound.
Unsound. We get from the, from the county assessor, these are unsound properties that we were going through. And of course, we did look at budget, how much typically we could handle. Obviously, we have a budget that we have to work with, so, but that's what we, a work session is, to get that kind of direction from the commission on our, what our process is, is something you can support. And then, so when we come back to commission for actually, you know, to go through the process, condemnation process.
And maybe we need to look at the criteria that the appraiser is using compared to the criteria that we operate under, because to take what she's saying is unsound, it's got to translate to our codes, and they don't operate with the building code in our ordinances, so, you know, looking at what she's basing her opinion on has to be...
We, we have actually physically looked at every property. Staff has gone out and looked at every property to see whether we would recommend it for condemnation or it could be, and plus, plus the other thing is, is speaking with the owners. We try to have a conversation as part of the process of, you know, sometimes they may just sign off and we wouldn't have to go through a process, that would be quickest. But as they say, staff... But, uh, as I say, staff has gone through all those properties, uh, looked at everyone, carefully, uh, so yeah, we just didn't say, here's the list and from the county, you know, we, we assessed it ourselves. I mean, we didn't enter the properties, but you could see pretty quickly whether they were good candidates for condemnation or not. It's just, just a suggestion for, rather than at a commission meeting, a work session, because we do want that feedback from the commission on, on that process. I, I think the staff has done a great job, it's a kind of internal staff committee, uh, working with housing as well, since they, you know, they, they pay for half of the funds that we use, uh, for condemnations. And, uh, you know, the, the instructions we've had in the past is, let's be aggressive, let's, let's, let's try to, you know, and maybe Gary can add, get, add to it, and I know we've heard more than once about, let's, how many more can we do? Can we get these done faster? So we're working on that process. And it's part of our strategic plan that we, we, from, from last year, so that's really the impetus to get this process going.
And I think the, the thing that we haven't done in the past is put a priority on the houses. We've operated with complaints instead of the reality of, let's get rid of the worst ones first. And I think that's where we need to, to regroup, is pick the ones, yeah, somebody can file a complaint, well, let's put it on the list, but let's take the one out that's the worst condition. So, you know, you've got to have that inventory to put them in priority and, and work, but, you know, if we're looking at, at the work session to go through the procurement policy, I think we try to keep it to an hour and a half, and if we spend an hour or so going over the procurement policy, it's gonna be a little rush to go through another thirty, forty-five minute discussion on...
Would it be appropriate to have another special meeting? I, we don't want to, you know, we worked diligently trying to get this process, and we were hoping to do it actually in May here, uh, as well at a, at a work session or a commission meeting. Be waiting a whole nother month, month, another five weeks.
I think three meetings a month for us is enough, personally.
Well, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, I'd hate to, you know, we're, we're on overtime and don't want to stretch the budget for us being compensated for four meetings instead of just three.
Yeah, yeah. Put me in another tax bracket. Kidding. Yeah, uh...
I mean, we could bring it just then to the next commission meeting on the, or the first meet, or preferably, I guess, the first commission meeting in June, and, rather than the work session.
Yeah.
When Gary's back.
You know, if you do have a, a packet or a folder of what you're gonna present, you can always let us look at it.
Sure.
Beforehand.
Sure.
And that'd cut down the time that we don't need to go through every, every page, but we could summarize. So if you, if you do have it prepared in a handout, you know, go ahead and get it to us and we can...
Sure.
Start looking around too. Be, be something beneficial for us if we knew what you're looking at, to go by and look too, or not every one, but a few to get a feel, instead of just sitting here and have it presented all at once, so...
Sure, we'll do that.
Thanks, and then that way we could, we could handle that at a regular, uh, commission meeting, we can get a lot of the preliminary late work out of the way.
We'll plan on the first meeting in June, first commission meeting in June.
Okay.
Thirteenth.
Sounds great. Okay, Commissioner, comments? Leonard?
I don't have any.
Gary, you have any comments?
I will just say I'd much rather be an independent than Dallas. I won't say.
Okay, okay. You're, you are bringing food samples when you come back, is that correct?
I just threw away about twenty pounds of brisket right out of the pit, broke my heart.
Sorry. All right, Gary, well, good luck, and, uh, I hope you have some fun.
Thank you.
Yeah. The only thing I would like, uh, to mention, or that I had, not really concern, but just to bring it up, um, you had sent me an email that, uh, some information that I had requested, and it didn't come up on the agenda today on the EMS facility. Could, um, could you send me that information that's, uh, that you've drawn, that Dave has drawn up on that?
Sure.
Concerning that facility? Facility? And, uh, then I thank you guys for the list of the, um, all the property that's in city ownership. And, um, and then maybe at some point in time, um, I know the one oh six and one oh eight, these Chestnut, those properties were bought to, were brought, bought to, uh, at some point in time, those properties would be removed, and that lot would, that land would eventually open up to where the city would have access to, to that, so that's why the properties were, uh, acquired.
That's right.
So what, what are the conditions of those two buildings, one oh six and one oh eight? These Chestnut, has, has there been an assessment made on those?
I don't know, I don't know, does anybody know, one, I don't even know which buildings are, those are.
David had made an NEA assessment of how much it would cost to make it accessible, and it didn't seem like it was, uh, would meet a cost benefit to do that. So, I mean, it was bought for that purpose to remove them, so if you guys want us to proceed that way, we'll have to go, you know, go through the state on the historical thing and...
Sure.
And get that taken care of, but you guys can override that. So you just let us know and we can start with that process, if that's what you want us to do.
I think that was the original intent.
It was.
And then maybe we can, um, bring that up and discuss that when Gary's back and proceed on that, because if there, if there's, um, that was the reason why they were bought in the first place, so...
Yes.
Trying to, trying to find property that we have that we no longer have a need for, to move it down the road, um...
Now we take it off the tax rules, as far as the city was paying taxes on it, because it was previously rented, but now it's not. So once you remove those, it'd just be part of that memorial hall parcel.
I'd like to, I'd like to see that, so maybe we can bring that up, uh, in the, uh, June meeting when, when Gary's back. Other than that, I don't have, uh, I don't have anything else. We don't have any other public concerns, okay? With that, um, I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, motion carried. Thank you for attending tonight.